This meeting is being recorded.
Mr. Mayor, we live.
Great, thank you. So today is December 21st, 2022. The time is 5:09 PM. And I'm calling to order the Ballpark City Council's special meeting. City Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Emmanuel Estrada. Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian.
I'm here.
Councilmember Alejandra Avila. Present. Councilmember Gina Yala.
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
Thank you for that. And I believe next, we will open up the public communications. City Clerk, is there anybody looking to speak? Nobody?
No, Mayor.
Great. And so at this moment, if there's anybody looking to speak that didn't fill out a speaker card, now's your time. Seeing that nobody is looking to speak, I will go ahead and close public communication, and we will move to our first order of business, which is a presentation from Southern California Edison.
Thank you. May I, should I begin?
All right. I didn't have my microphone on. Ron, I was just introducing you and Art. And I was simply saying in the way of background that when we transitioned Auto Be Proud, as of February of 2022 of this year, we knew and actually with the coordination with Edison, you had the Time of Use program rollout in the chute, ready to be rolled out. But you know, you kindly coordinated with us so that it wouldn't be rolled out at the same time that we were decommissioning Be Proud. But soon thereafter, you began rolling it out. And the council members had expressed an interest on wanting to know how it is going and the intricacies of the program. So we appreciate you and Art and Sal for coming in to make the presentation on the program. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank the mayor and the members of the city council. It's a privilege to appear before you today. Very grateful for the opportunity. And we have a presentation which I'm pleased to go through. If at any time you have questions, please, we can stop or we can wait till the end of the presentation. Just two very, or actually one quick question. How long would you prefer me to, how long would you like this presentation to go? Is it short or is there a time limit that you're looking at?
Twenty minutes. Oops, sorry. Twenty minutes.
Okay, I can make that happen. Okay, great. Then I will begin first by, again, my thanks on behalf of Edison for the invitation to present to the council and to the attendees of this meeting. Today, I'm going to be speaking about rate plan options from Southern California Edison, putting a special emphasis on our time of use residential rates. Talk a little bit about the migration that took place over the past, I believe, well, a couple of years in which most of SCE's residential customers were migrated to time of, to time of use rates with an option to remain on their prior rate, which is called a tiered rate. And I'll discuss a little more detail the difference. And also be talking about some of the customer care programs and assistance programs for, that are available to SCE customers. We are very aware that our customers have, first of all, been challenged by the pandemic and both the public health and the financial economic impacts of the pandemic. And following that, a period of inflationary pressure that's affecting the economy. And we realize that that's causing challenges for some customers in paying their bills. We have several options available to help, to help people. And really, our focus is on as, as great a customer experience as we can provide for, for those who depend on and rely upon Southern California Edison to deliver their power safely, reliably, affordably, and with a greater and greater emphasis on clean energy and environmental concerns and sustainability. May I ask you to move to the next slide? So this slide is really just an introduction to Southern California Edison. Our, we are one of the largest electric utilities in the United States. We covered, if you look at that map, the, our service area is represented by the, the yellow portion, and it's a 50,000 square mile service area. We have 5 million customer accounts, 4.3 million of those are residential customers. And the remainder are either businesses or municipal accounts, agricultural accounts. Guess that falls under business. And we're not just focused on providing our customers their day-to-day electric energy needs. We're very much focused on, on the future of California in terms of we have put a lot of investment into our infrastructure to modernize and to protect the grid from, from increasing threats posed by extreme weather, which many, if not all of us, have experienced or at least seen. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. But we're, you know, very focused on improving reliability today and preparing for a clean energy future tomorrow. We're regulated by the California Public Utilities Commission. The rates that we charge are determined through, which you may be familiar with, it's called the general rate case. But in very simple terms, the general rate case really is, is like a case in a, you know, in a courtroom, there's an administrative law judge, there are witnesses for and against. The utility makes a case for the amount of revenue it'll need to run its business and deliver electricity safely, reliably, affordably, affordably over the next four-year cycle. And during that rate case, Southern California Edison makes its case. And those representing other parties, primarily consumer advocates, will make the case for why Edison should get less than they're asking for in terms of protection for consumers. And at the end of that proceeding, the, that's where the determination by the CPC lets us know how much Edison is authorized to collect from our customers through rates. Next slide, please. So I'm going to talk about rate plan options. Please go ahead. And you'll see there, it's mentioned that California has some very ambitious goals for, to regarding, regarding its reduction of greenhouse gases, looking at a 60% of electricity from renewable resources by 2030, which may sound like a long time, but in utility world, it's, it's, it's coming up pretty fast. And California, as you know, has a target of 100% carbon-free energy by 2045. So what does this have to do with rates? Well, let me just start by saying the time of use rates, which you've indicated are very interested in. They, basically, they feature different costs. And when I talk about costs, I'm going to be talking about cents per kilowatt hour. That's similar to talking about when you drive up to the gas station and you want to, you purchase gasoline in dollars per gallon. Purchase of electricity by consumers is cents per kilowatt hours. And basically, time of use has different rates based on the time of day. And we'll talk a little bit more why about that is. But generally, very basic concept is there are on-peak hours in which energy is more, energy and electric service are more expensive to deliver. And generally, those are the hours between 4:00 and 9:00 PM. And then there are off-peak hours, which energy is less expensive to deliver. And in fact, during those hours, California's electric grid has an abundance of renewable, cleaner and less expensive energy. And so during those times of day, Edison passes along the savings to their customers in the form of reduced rates. And next slide, please. This is testing my eyes. But what I'm going to talk about here really, in general, is the difference between a tiered and a time of use rate. And for most customers throughout the history of Edison, most customers are really residential customers, as I should say, they should have been served on what's called a tiered rate or just called the domestic rate plan. A tiered rate is, is very simple in the sense that it just, it basically charges for the amount of kilowatt hours that a customer uses during their billing period. If their billing period is from, you know, the 10th of the month A to the 9th of month B, it simply just charges the cents per kilowatt hour rate, doesn't matter what time of day or what season, it just is a cost, a cents per kilowatt hour rate. Time of use rates are a little bit different. And as I mentioned before, because the, the cost of electric service changes at different times of day, depending on the time of day, if you're enrolled in a time of use rate, the time of day will make a difference in how much that cents per kilowatt hour charge is. And as I said, it's beneficial, that kind of rate is most beneficial for customers who are able to shift some or even most of their electric energy usage to off-peak hours, which are before 4:00 PM and after 9:00 PM. There's also an option, just as a side note, there's an option to choose a 5:00 to 8:00 PM on-peak, which is a, makes it a little easier for customers who may have a hard time having that 4:00 to 9:00, 5-hour on-peak period to avoid. If they'd like a shorter period, they can choose a 5:00 to 8:00 PM option. But those rates are just a little higher to compensate for the, for the, for the shorter timeframe. Next question, not next question, next slide, please. I'll be very, what this slide shows very generally is kind of what I was saying before. This shows the TOU 4:00 to 9:00 PM rate and the TOU 5:00 to 8:00 PM rate. And basically, the, the cost during the summer season and for Southern California Edison, the summer season is from June 1st through September 30th. And that's a period of time where demand for electricity is notably increased due to the increased use of air conditioning in the summer months. The costs of energy, because there's in greater demand, go up and, and it's reflected in our costs. But as I said before, you'll see from that chart that the period from 4:00 to 9:00 PM over on the left and the period from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, using energy during that time is most expensive. And customers can be rewarded with savings that SCE enjoys by shifting more of their energy usage to those less expensive or green parts of the day. I just want to mention that below, on the bottom part of the slide, there is a, it reflects the winter charges. It's pretty much the same time periods, but during the winter months, the price from mornings till afternoon is the lowest cents per kilowatt hour rate that is charged all year. And again, after the, the peak period, the rates come back down. So that's what it's, that's what this slide is representing. I also want to just throw in or add that when these rates were designed, the idea was that these rates would be revenue neutral in the sense of if you're a residential customer and you were paying, I'm just pulling this number out of the air, $1,000 each year for your, for your, on your energy bill, and you were on a tiered rate. These rates were designed so that if you moved to a TOU rate, you should still be paying that same $1,000 or whatever number you're paying per year. It's just that during the summer months, bills will generally be higher. And during the winter months, bills be lower.
They had anything for you to do during the?
I think he probably did not.
Oh, I'm sorry. Was there a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no worries at all. I'm, I'm ready to move. I'll take a breath here in case anyone wanted to ask any questions before I move on. Hopefully, I'm, I'm communicating clearly and not making a tough subject even more confusing. It's, that's not my aim. So the next, I want to talk about the time of use migration. Next slide, please. There, so beginning in November of 20, Art, check me on this. Beginning in November of 2020, November of 2020.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you. Southern California Edison began its, its largest migration of customers to time of use rates. There were previous iterations, one, I believe, in 2016 or 17, and then one in 2018, where a couple of hundred thousand customers were migrated to time of use rates. And that was, it was, first of all, it was done in phases because 4.3 million customers, lot of technical effort, lot of manpower, a lot of, a lot went into those transitions. And so our first two, we were kind of, we were learning as well what works and what works best and what, what doesn't work best in, in these transitions. So the main transition, as I said, began in November 2019, where we started moving our remaining customers, residential customers from tiered rates to time of use rates. And when, and that happened in monthly waves, we called them waves, and with several hundred thousand customers in different parts of our service area each month. For the most part, actually, with very few exceptions, customers who are being transitioned received a lot of communications before the transition happened. It wasn't, we want customers to be aware and as prepared as possible. So customers received a letter 90 days ahead of their transition date. And also another reminder, 30 days ahead of that transition date. And in that letter, it contained, you'll see in the, the second to the left, a custom rate analysis. What's meant by that is the letter showed that here's what, as a customer, you were paying on your tiered rate. And it was going to, and it showed the options of if the customer had this exact same energy usage pattern from the previous year, then this would be the estimate of their, how much they would be paying on a time of use 4:00 to 9:00 rate and a time of use 5:00 to 8:00 rate. And it, it, based on that usage pattern, it, it made a recommendation on which would be the most cost-efficient rate for that customer. Those analyses were individualized for each customer. Now, I do want to point out that those were based on previous consumption patterns. And it's possible for a customer to save money, pay less if, again, as I mentioned, they are able to shift some of their energy usage away from the on-peak periods of either 4:00 to 9:00 PM or 5:00 to 8:00 PM. The second from the right about customer choice. This migration, it's very important to say, there is an option involved in this. Customers could, if our recommendation was to, that a 4:00 to 9:00 PM rate was most suited for a customer, they could say, yep, I want to try it. Or they could say, no, I actually, my lifestyle is more suited to a 5:00 to 8:00 PM on-peak. Or they could say, you know what, I actually don't want this time of use rate, I want to stay with my tier grade. And that, they were offered that choice in the, the pre-migration communications. And in all honesty, if even after the customers migrated, if they feel that they would do better on a tiered rate instead of a time of use rate, they can go back to their original tiered rate. But I will say that customers are allowed to, to make that switch only once in a 12-month period. And then lastly, build protection. And I'll turn to Art in just a second. But the customers who were migrated beginning in November 2020, November 2020, November 2019, sorry. And that went through, I believe, June or so of 2021.
Yes.
Those customers were given what was called, or offered build protection. Sorry, Art, go ahead.
June of 2022 is their last wave.
Oh, June of 2022 is the last wave. Thank you. They were given the opportunity, if it turns out that they would have paid less. Again, I'm going to use some numbers for, for example here. If previously, they had paid $1,000 over the course of the year for their energy bill and on a time of use rate over their next 12 months, if it turned out that they paid $1,100 over the course of the year, Edison would credit them for that extra $100, basically saying, you know what? Tiered was better for you, that money that you paid in addition, you know, over what you would have paid on your old rate, we're going to credit your account for that much. So that was available to all the customers who went through that transition. I think one of the, one of the council members or perhaps the mayor had mentioned, wanted to know how this, the TOU transition is going. And Art, check me on this, as I understand it, about 60% of the customers who were given the option have stayed on a time of use rate so far.
I, I, I don't have that specific number for, that has stayed. But we do have the, the vast majority of customers that have stayed. We've transitioned over to TOU, have stayed on TOU, you know, with the build protection there being in place. I did want to also make a slight modification to the timing of the communications, right? So in, in these pre, pre-default communications, that kind of outlines these four points here. In particular, to Baldwin Park, they, instead of receiving a 90-day, 30-day, they actually received a 60-day, 30-day. And that was just due to the timing of migrating back to, to Edison from the decommissioning of Be Proud. And then, you know, in, in, also in alignment with our regulatory obligation to have customers migrated over the timing behind that. So the Baldwin Park customers that we did trends over, didn't get a 90-day, they got a 30-day with, with a 60-day.
Yeah, and I think that's actually represented in this presentation.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry if I.
No, no worries at all.
Run, run, Art, you may have it in your slides, in your next slides. But would you happen to know, on the average, what, whether customers, everything else being equal, whether customers in Baldwin Park are actually paying less under the TOU versus the normal tier that they might have been on prior? Would you, would you know that?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but I can take that as an action item to go back and find out and research that question and come back with, with an answer to that. I cannot have that off the top of my head, but I'm happy to.
Yeah, that would be good. Thank you.
Check that out. Absolutely. Pardon me, this, this slide is testing my, my old eyes here. But as, as Art mentioned, Baldwin Park had a different experience in most of the communities that transitioned. Instead of getting a 90-day notification that there were going to be customers where we transitioned 90 days, they've got a 60-day letter and then another reminder of 30 days. So that was different. And we understand it was probably challenging for many of the Baldwin Park customers to have gone through the exiting the CCA that existed. And I believe that was in February, if I can read the small type here. It's, it's not small type on the slide, but it's just showing up on my screen like that. So February, they had that one change. And then in June, just a few months later, was the transition to, to time of use rates. And that's, that was a, that's a fair amount of change for customers. And we understand that, you know, there may have been concerns or some information may not have, may not have reached, or they may not have gotten all the information that they needed. It certainly wasn't for lack of effort, but certainly in that timeframe, we could see that there is, you know, concern about customers being fully informed about their options. Over on the right of that slide is a depiction of one of the customer letters in which it talks about the transition to time of use rate. And it shows the, how, you know, it visually presents the on-peak and off-peak periods. And I'm assuming there's a reference on that letter as well to their customized rate analysis. Next slide, please. So how do I know what rate plan may be best for me? Customers can still take advantage of that rate analysis if they go to www.se.com/rateplantool. They put in their account number. And again, it'll, it'll do that analysis, analysis of based on the past 12 months, which of our rates, either a tiered rate or a time of use 4:00 to 9:00 or a time of use 5:00 to 8:00 plan is most advantageous for them, based on, as I said, previous usage. Now, the one thing I will say is that for this tool to work, the customer must have a 12-month record so that our system can make the comparison over the past 12 months and make the projection in 12 months forward. One other thing I do want to add, I've been talking about the time of use rates, 4:00 to 9:00 PM or 5:00 to 8:00 PM. There is one more time of use rate option, but that is specifically for customers who have clean energy technologies such as an electric vehicle or battery storage, heat, electric heat pump, things of that nature. That is called TOU prime. And actually, those rates to incentivize the adoption of those technologies, those rates are, are lower than the 4:00 to 9:00 and 5:00 to 8:00 rates for, for the, for the general customers. So customers who do avail themselves and have their, the ability to purchase or lease or an EV. And in fact, even if it's a used electric vehicle, we have incentives programs, it's a separate presentation that provide incentives for customers who want to buy used EV and provides credits for that as well. But the point I guess I wanted to make here is customers can still anytime go and find what rate is, is best for them. Art, I'm seeing here new customers and what has happened now at turn-on, when a customer begins an account, let's say they moved into our service area, or they moved within our service area and are starting an account, the default is time of use. So if there's no, if it's not indicated otherwise, the new accounts will start at time of use unless someone asks for a tier grade. Do I have that right, Art?
That's correct. Yeah, it's going to give you like a suggestion based on, on your rate options. And, and we have the option as well as if, if, if not, if nothing was really answered during those questionnaires, we then go to our default rate. And our default rate for, as of now, is the TOU 4:00 to 9:00.
Okay. I, I just want to do a time check. I want to be respectful of the mayor and the council member's time. Am I, am I coming near the end of my allotted time or should I speed up or am I doing our?
Yeah, only if there are any questions from the council members. If not, yeah, this, this will be the end of your time, Ron, if you don't mind.
Can I just add one more slide? I just want to make one more, I would just like to wrap up with one more slide, if you could just move ahead, if you don't mind. Not that one, please move, move ahead a little further. Customer program, customer care programs and assistance, that's it. So I just want to say that for the customers who are having challenges managing their bills, I mentioned before that SCE offers a wide range of programs to help them out. You see the Care and Fairer programs, those are for what are referred to as income-qualified customers if their household income is below certain federal guidelines. They can receive discounts, monthly discounts of up to 30% on their bills. Medical baseline is for customers who have medically-powered life support equipment. That gives them some benefits. It takes into account the energy usage for their necessary medical equipment. And so that, that helps them with their bills. I just want to overall urge that the residents of Baldwin Park who qualify for these programs, really, we want them to take advantage of as many of these programs as possible. For some of the customers who are above those income guidelines, still need some help managing their bills. SCE offers payment extensions, people can get a 30-day extension on paying their bills. If they have a past due balance, they can enroll in a payment arrangement in which their past due balance is paid off over time and in bite-sized installments, let me say. And there's even conditional debt relief programs for, for income-qualified customers. If customers have accumulated debt related to their energy bill, and that was during the period of the COVID-19 pandemic, they can get that debt, I'm going to say forgiven, just by paying their regular bill on time. So if for 12 consecutive months, for every month that a customer who is enrolled in this program, it's called the Rearridge Management Program, if they pay their bill on time, they're just their normal bill, then 1/12 of their debt gets erased. And that happens for 12 months. And that happens for twelve consecutive months until their entire debt is erased. Um, so that's just a taste of the programs that we have available. We really are, it's really important to us that. Customers take advantage of these because in all honesty, they're underutilized, and we have um, the funding and the resources for more people than. Then are currently utilizing these programs. So if there's anything I would just leave you with is. Anything you can do to urge your residents to take advantage of these programs, w- we would. We urge it and we'd like to help in any way we can get the work out. And thank you very much for the time, appreciate it. I know your time is very valuable and I hope. That um, you found this informational, I uh, will commit to. Getting the information from that one question about whether customers in Baldwin Park overall are benefiting from time of use rates.
Thank you, Ron.
Oh, sorry, Mayor.
Oh, it's okay. Thank you for that. So we just want to make sure that we connect on the potential um. Process for for discounts and and bill reduction. We want to make sure um, we're able to share that with our community. And then we also want to double check on the action item. To see how many people are actually saving with T O U and how many people are actually seeing an increase uh, in cost of bills.
Who's speaking? Is that Danny who I'm uh, or?
The mayor.
Oh, the mayor, I'm pardon me, my apologies. Um, I'll work with Sal to get that information um. To get that information to you.
Great, thank you.
I do have a very much. I do have a quick question, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, Mayor, put it in.
Uh, thank you, Ron, for the presentation. I do have a couple of questions, only because I have had uh. Many residents reach out, especially during the summer months, that their bills have dramatically increased from the prior year. Uh, give you one example, uh, one of the residents was paying anywhere from three ninety five to four fifty last year in the summer. This year, they received their bill, their bill for the month was nine hundred and ninety three dollars. And this was for. The month of. Uh, I don't have the month on here, but it was uh, during the summer months. And so I believe he was in the tiered and now he's probably. Um, and he was in the time of use and now he's been switched over to the tiered pricing. So since a lot of our residents were under the be proud program. Last year. You mentioned the rate comparison tool would, if these residents were switched from be proud to now S E. Would they be able to use the comparison tool since they haven't been with S E for the full twelve months?
Art, can you help me with that? Uh, the one thing I will guess, I would say is that even the the. The pride was providing generation services and we would be providing distribution services. So Art, would those customers have at least their distribution services as part of their record with S E?
Yeah, that's correct. Like, um, the the um. Rate plan comparison tool is available for those customers to go on there. Um, it's usage based, uh, and if I'm not mistaken, um, it only takes into consideration. Uh, the S E charges. So it would not include generation charges for the time that they're on be proud. Um, but the it either way, the tool is available um, because we've got usage history on that. So the the customer can go on to the rate plan comparison tool. And um, run through the the cycle of questions in 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 the tool itself. Uh, and it it will help them give an idea of uh, which rate best suits them.
I would like to do a little more research on that because I I'm just concerned that some customers may see. Um, the numbers may come out a little confusing because the the beat during the time of those residents for part of be proud. We didn't have their generation charges. We didn't have a record of that. We just had their distribution charges. And now we're using the the twelve uh, rate tool, we might be estimating. That full transmission, I'm sorry, generation and uh, distribution charges or delivery charges. So I, so everything Art said is correct, but I do want to do a little more research on that so that your your residents uh. Aren't confused if they see some numbers that look a little odd because of that change.
Yeah, so I think our biggest, our biggest goal here is to educate our residents. To figure out what's going to work best for them, either the tiered pricing or the time of use pricing. Because I'll be honest with you, I didn't even know what I was under, and I might have received that letter and just. Didn't, you know, pay attention to it, whatever the reason may be. But then we look at our bill and it's like, whoa, wait a minute, our bill's a lot more than it was in the prior month or the prior year. And I think that's what's happening to a lot of the residents. They're just getting that sticker shock when they're seeing their bill. You know, a thousand dollars, almost a thousand dollars or even a thousand plus in some some cases. And I know that the summer, you know, peak time, it's a lot more expensive. Um, another question that I did have for you was the wildfire fund charge. Is that something that's charged to every resident across the entire state? Or? The wildfire.
Fire budget charge. Um, I will say that wildfire charges are part of the bill. I would, I I think it'll, if you um. If I'm recalling this correctly, about a nickel. Between, yeah, about five to seven cents of every dollar that a customer sends in the bill, that's related to wildfire risk reduction. Um, that's S E. I can't speak for places like Pacific Gas and Electric and San Diego Gas and Electric, but I have a feeling that it's similar for them as well. So those costs are uh, across the state because the wildfire issue is a statewide issue.
Got it. So it's not just by different areas that are a higher risk of fires, it's just across the state period.
No, and I will say, not to take too much time, but that was definitely um, a part of discussions, I think, up in in uh, Sacramento and San Francisco. Um, but the truth is, um, even when an area is not a high fire risk area. Um, the damage and the impacts of a catastrophic wildfire, not just a wildfire, but some of those catastrophic wildfires, we've seen the complex wildfires, which have. Done, you know, billions in damage. Um, those have impacts even beyond the high fire risk areas, just in terms of the strain it puts on. State resources, the fact that um, you know, a utility like S D has to reroute power away from the power lines that. Are threatened, so that puts extra strain on power lines and other areas. So yes, the high fire risk areas are the most impacted. But those events have impacts across the entire electric grid.
Got it. My last question to you, because I know we're pressed on time, is what is uh, where it says your rate and then it says domestic?
Yes.
Is that separate from tiered or T O U?
Domestic domestic is uh, is is tiered rate.
Got it.
Domestic rate is a tiered rate. If you had a T O U, really would say time of use or T O U four to nine or T O U five to eight. But if you see domestic, that means it's tiered rate.
Tiered rate, perfect. Okay, well, thank you so much for your for your uh, assistance.
My pleasure, and please reach out to me um, or Sal, if you have specific questions, we were um, it'd be our our pleasure to get you as specific an answer as we can.
Great, thank you for that. So at this moment, we will move to recess for a close session.